Good evening and welcome to the InFocus Candidate Forum sponsored by WCTV, the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Western Wayne News. I am Paul Whitty, board member of the Chamber of Commerce, and it's my pleasure to be the moderator of the InFocus Candidate Forum tonight for Richmond Common Council Districts 2 and 5. Have some general housekeeping items want to cover first. In-person absentee voting has already begun and is currently underway. Election Day is November 7th. And if you do in-person voting, everything's listed there. We've got First Bank Coleman Center, First English Lutheran, the Golei Center, Milton Town Hall, Mount Olive Baptist Church, and First Baptist Church. And that is on Election Day. In that evening, you can join us for a special night, November 7th, live coverage of the 2023 General Election from Whitewater Hall at Indiana University East. Tonight with us, we have from District 2 Democratic candidate Dr. Lucinda Wright and Republican candidate Gary Miller could not join us this evening. Joining us from District 5, we have Democratic candidate Jeff Locke and Republican candidate Anne Taylor. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Dr. Wright, first I'm going to start with you. First, just tell me a little bit about yourself and why you're running for Richmond Common Council.
My name is Lucinda Wright. I am a product of Richmond Community Schools. I have a bachelor's degree in political science pre-law from Howard University in Washington DC. And I have a doctorate degree in biblical counseling from North Carolina College of Theology in Wilmington, North Carolina. And I currently, I was appointed to city council two years ago. And I'm learning. I continue to learn. And I'm embedded, I'm vested in my community. I left for about 12 years and came back. I'm vested in my community, the people here, and the volunteer work that I do puts me out there with those in need. And I feel that I am, that is my assignment too, that God said, "This is what I need you to do." So I understand my assignment. I take it seriously. So there's so much more work that we have to do in city council, and I want to continue so that we can move our city forward.
Thank you, Lucinda.
No problem.
So Anne, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for council.
Hello, my name is Anne Taylor. I am running for city council District 5. I was raised on a farm in Eden County, but I've been a resident in Wayne County for approximately the past 15 years. I'm a real estate broker, wife of a law enforcement officer, and combined, we have over 40 years of serving the public and advocating for our city and our community and the citizens and different aspects. I have a passion for serving. I'm ready to step up and be a servant leader as your District 5 City Council representative.
All right. Thank you, Anne. Jeff, same question.
Well, first of all, thank you and WCTV, Western Wayne News, and the Chamber for putting on this forum for all the candidates you posted this month. I'm Jeffrey Locke. I'm currently the District 5 City Council person. Been on city council for eight years now. Part of my city council duties, I'm on the City Finance Committee, and I'm also on the RP&amp;L Finance Committee. I moved here to Richmond in 2008 when Angela and I got married, but I've worked in Richmond for about 20 years because I worked here at this campus on the IU Police Department. I served 39 years as a law enforcement officer. I've been involved with Lions Club International for 38 years, and I've held positions at a state level for Lions Club. I come from a family of public servants, and I just feel being on city council is a way for me to give back to this community, which is my town now too, since I've lived here about 14 years. So I'm running for reelection to continue to serve the people of the 5th District.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Anne, I'm going to start with you with this question, and it's very similar, but what has prepared you for this position? And how can you leverage your past experiences to benefit the common council?
In previous years and positions, I have experience in assisting in the management of a multimillion-dollar revolving budget for a large corporation. I have worked with several nonprofits, helping them manage their budgets while balancing their needs as well. Not only do I have experience in managing large budgets, but I also have experience and knowledge in mortgage lending. And as a Realtor, I have worked with countless families who are trying to balance their finances to find their dream home.
Jeff, I'm going to come to you on this one, and just how can you, what has prepared you and how can you leverage your past experiences?
Well, as I said, I've led a service of, a life of public service throughout the years. I was deputy chief and chief of police in Connersville. When I was chief, I managed the department of 40 people. I had to prepare the budget for the city council there. Working at IU East, I was the assistant to Chief Cole. And Chief Cole and I were on the senior IU command staff for all seven IU police departments. Outside of law enforcement and politics, I've been involved with, as I said, Lions Club, other civic fraternal groups where I've been president or chair of those groups. I'm treasurer of the Lions Club nonprofit and a fraternal nonprofit, and I manage their investments that are invested in with a firm in Indianapolis. So I just think my past experience, my past leadership has prepared me to be on this position.
Thank you, Jeff. Lucinda?
Same question.
Same question, yeah. What has prepared you for this position and how can you leverage your past experiences to benefit the common council?
For the last two years, being on common council has helped to prepare me, to continue to prepare me for this position. Also, being president of the Board of Townsend Community Center and the executive director there as well has prepared me, working with budgets, talking to the constituents, trying to help them to eliminate their barriers, and hearing what they're saying. Not only do I hear what they say, I listen to what they say. And that's how we are able to provide the services and programming and develop those by listening and hearing what the people are saying.
Thank you very much. Okay, going to talk a little bit about management style and conflict resolution. So Jeff, I'm going to start with you. Just talk a little bit about your management style and how you handle conflict resolution to reach compromise. Because a lot of this is about compromise.
Right. Management style, I always believe I'm not the smartest person in the room. Just because I was chief of police or a leader of a different group doesn't make me the smartest person in the room. Other people have ideas. You need to listen to those ideas. Somebody might have a better idea. So you've got to work as a group. And I think currently us on city council, the nine of us, we work as a group. You know, it's been fun being on city council with the folks I'm on city council with. Conflict resolution, you've just got to talk it out. You know, you just have to talk it out. I wish you'd work on some conflict resolution in DC right now. But it's just, you just have to talk it out, come to terms with each other, and there's got to be some give and take. And hopefully you get it resolved where everybody goes away feeling that, not necessarily they won, but feeling satisfied with the outcome.
Well, thank you. Lucinda, let's talk about your management style and how you handle conflict resolution to reach a compromise.
I don't know everything. I don't micromanage. Everyone has to agree to disagree amicably. But again, communication is key to resolution. So we have to talk things through, be respectful and mindful of one another, and work together as a team. Being on city council, it's a team. So it's teamwork. So we have to work as a team and agree to disagree because we all have different personalities. So listen, there's going to be some compromising, and then once the discussion is over, everybody will walk away, as Jeff said, feeling good about the decisions that were made and the resolutions.
All right. Thank you. Anne, do you want to repeat the question or are you, you're good?
I think I'm good. I believe in servant leadership. I think one of the most important things that you can know is what you do not know. And surrounding yourself with people who complement your weaknesses with their strengths. And everything is a team effort. It's not a hierarchy. It's you're a part of a team. Everybody brings something different, different skill set, different knowledge, different background to that team. And that's what makes you strong. And that's what makes, I think would make it the strongest city council. And as far as conflict resolution, I think that regardless of your differences, when we all have the same goal, which is what is best for our community, even if we disagree, we can still sit down, hear each other out, and truly listen to what the other person is saying with the intent to understand and not respond immediately. And in doing so, I think that you oftentimes can come up with a better solution when you put your heads together than you had on your own. Some of the best ideas were born out of two people who disagreed but came together and to find common ground.
Well, thank you very much. Lucinda, and I ask this question of everybody, but what are two to three priorities you believe are important facing the city of Richmond and/or common council and/or your district? District 2.
District 2, I've lived in District 2 the whole time, all my life except for the 12 years that I was living in DC. District 2 has, down through the years, has been neglected. A lot of the things that were done in other parts of the town, District 2, north of those, especially north of the Northeast Street, rural tracks. However, just Monday, there are some changes that are going to come through in North Richmond, I'm happy to say, on that side, that end of town. But taking care of our neighborhoods. Safety is a priority as well. I will say this, from the information that I've gathered and I've seen, that North Richmond's has less crime than any other part of town. That's because we have that village mentality where we take care of everybody and look out after everybody. So if we see something that doesn't look right, we've got your neighbor's number, we call. We call the neighbor or we'll call law enforcement. And I will say that, I will have to say that RPD, the times that I've known they've been called and that I myself have had to call, they are right on it, and I commend them and I thank them for their services that they do. But, and food deserts. There's no, in District 2, there is not a grocery store per se. Where you can get fresh produce. You know, you can get fresh cut meat where you can get, you know, it's all these convenience stores. So those three things. Housing, safe housing, safety, and the food deserts.
Yeah. Very good. Anne, what are two to three priorities facing city of Richmond, common council, and/or District 5?
Well, recently, we had someone who had put in for a variance, a petition for a zoning variance for a liquor store. We actually just last night had that meeting, and it was amazing how quickly our community came together. We had over 70 signatures of people who couldn't be there, but we were able to still be there and their voices were still represented. And I think we had over 40 people in attendance. And with working together, we were able to get that handled to where they, about a quarter way through, I would say, of people wanting to speak, decided to withdraw their petition. But I think that it's, we just are going to have to continue being vigilant. Obviously, public safety is a huge thing for me. I think that violent crime in Richmond, it's increasing at a startling rate. We have citizens that are literally being killed off of sidewalks in daylight. We have apartment complexes that are looking like war zones. We've had active shooter situations. So those are something definitely that I would be passionate about. And with the budget, accountability, transparency, and I think that starts at the top and goes all the way down.
Thank you, Anne. Jeff?
I'd say, you know, some priorities would be our code enforcement, maybe beefing up that department so they can go around in some of these troubled neighborhoods, you know, to take care of the, you know, be it the trash or the house itself or whatever. Another priority, I'd like to see downtown reborn, revitalized. The mayor alluded last week and even at the council meeting Monday night that, you know, there's going to be announcements soon on the old Elder Bearman Building. One thing Lucinda didn't mention is, you know, the Richmond Common Council is the last group to sign off on the resolution for the Hoosier and Daring Legacy Program, or better known as HELP. There's a proposed apartment complex at the Old Nicholson School. There is a proposal for a Bearcat, which is a tactical vehicle for the police department. There's a lot of projects going, the gorge project, Parks and Recreation, you know, quality of life things. You know, to comment on what Anne just said a minute ago about the proposed liquor store. It was actually in Spring Grove, but all the neighbors from Oak Park and Berry Field and that neighborhood, they all did come together and got that stopped. So I was out campaigning one day and had a gentleman ask me, he said, "Well, what are you going to do for the 5th District?" And I said, "Well, what do you want me to do?" And he looked at me and goes, "Well, I never thought about it that way." So I gave him my number. I said, "Do you think it's something that we need to work on in the 5th District? I'm all going to listen to it."
Let's talk.
You know, let's talk about it. So in the 5th District itself, I think, you know, I haven't had any complaints lately of a major nature, but I think the programs coming through the HELP project is going to be a benefit to Richmond.
Great. I believe we do have a question coming in from Facebook, so I'm going to put that up on the screen here in a second. So Jeff, we'll start with you, circle back to you, says, "Richmond residents are always complaining about the deterioration of the neighborhoods. What would you do if elected as councilperson to affect change, clean up, and strengthen our neighborhoods?"
Well, I just kind of alluded to that in the last answer.
You did. That's why I figured I'd circle back to you and let you finish.
Yeah, we need, you know, Derek and his crew down there do a great job. You know, they handle complaints as they come in. They probably need more help down there. I mean, I've seen them out working in the alleys, cleaning up old tires or trash or whatever. I refer complaints to Derek, and he's, you know, been right on it. But Derek can't do it all by himself, and he probably needs more staff. Part of the HELP program is more money coming for blight. And I think it's roughly $288,000, $300,000. When we had the blight program before, I think we took down over 200 old abandoned dilapidated homes. So with the blight program that we get this money through HELP, we can help clean up some of those neighborhoods. A lot of the homes that were torn down, if they didn't make it, have a use for it. A lot of times what the city did, like it was between your and, you and your neighbor's house, they split that lot up. If the neighbors were willing to accept it, split that lot up. You got half the lot, the other neighbor got the other half where the abandoned home was, but we put it back on the tax rolls by doing it that way. So I think the blight program, code enforcement are two of the big things we can utilize to help clean up the town.
Anne? You went over a lot of stuff. I don't.
Another top priority for me would be housing for both low-cost and middle-class families. We definitely have to address the blight issue. We are quickly and rapidly becoming the beacon of blight, I'm afraid. And I, some of the things that come with that is not what Richmond needs right now. To get, as far as the, to get streets opened up, I think that's what the question was, we have got to put an end to the mayor's pet projects, to put it bluntly, and we have got to start wrapping up one project before we start another one. We have a lot of funding coming in, as he's mentioned, and that is great, and I am thankful for that. But if it's going to continue to shut our roads down, which makes it impossible for people to get to businesses, then I think no money is ever completely free. It comes with a price. And we are seeing the price of the sidewalks or the bike paths with the businesses downtown and with many other road closures. So I would definitely want to work to, if it's with NDOT, whoever the powers that be be, to wrap up one project before we start another project. And safety obviously is key. I know there have been a lot of accidents recently. Better communication with the public.
Thank you, Anne. Talk about cleaning up our neighborhoods, what needs to be done.
Let me, before I get to that, the roads. The amount of money that came in here is probably to repair the roads, which is state and federal government.
Right.
Which both trump the city. We probably won't see that kind of money in another lifetime, another generation perhaps, or two or three. So that, and I think the roads look good. The ones that are now complete, they look good, and I don't have to worry about bumps and tearing up my car, running over them, over potholes. One of the things that we can do to improve the neighborhoods, slum lords, absentee landlords. And with council, we could possibly, with council and code enforcement, we could possibly, and we work on some ordinances that will prevent that, that will make the landlords accountable for the conditions in which they're charging folk $600 for these homes, these apartments, that really are not fit to live in. So I think that's one of the things that council will probably be working on, prayerfully.
Can I respond to that?
By all means.
I understand what she said, you know, slum lords and the conditions of the properties. The truth of the matter is, that is something that has to be addressed. But I see, as a real estate agent, I am noticing the rental properties that are going up for sale are going to out-of-town investors, and that's a concern for me because they collect the properties often.
Absentee landlords.
Yes, absentee landlords. And so I think that one thing that I would want to see would be a community liaison for the landlords or with our local landlords, and someone that would be holding, to work closely with code enforcement. I think I'd like to see that completely redefined and that department held accountable a lot more. So that would be, but no, I definitely think that the, a community liaison to help keep the landlords accountable, hold them accountable is, would be a great asset.
And I'd like to add to that. One of the issues that code enforcement has, when they do, when they are called and they do go, the tenants have been told, if they let code enforcement in, that they will be evicted. So they, they don't allow them access to the place to look at it. So that's why we need ordinances dealing with the slum lords, the absentee landlords, the out-of-town landlords. And I think, once we get that in place, I think we'll see, I think it'd be totally different.
Yes, and having that liaison that they can, like you said, if they won't let them in, that it will hold them, go and hold that slum, the slum lord or the landlord, whatever the case may be, accountable. I agree completely.
Jeff, do you want to respond to that as well?
You know, another department we had years ago that was defunded was the Human Rights Commission. People could go to the Human Rights Commission and file these type complaints that they don't have heat or the windows are broken or whatever it might be. It was defunded years ago because I think there's people on council at the time felt, well, they can go to Indianapolis. Well, why these people can't get to Indianapolis? You know, they don't have a vehicle, they don't have the money to, you know, to get to Indianapolis. So I think another factor in this, to add to what both the ladies are saying, is if we had a Human Rights Commission where they could file a complaint locally, I think would also, you know, help in some of these problems we have. And as Lucinda said, you know, tenant can refuse the city the right to come into the property. There's nothing we can do. But if they had a safe place to report where they knew that, you know, they had some protection, I think that would help too.
Absolutely.
A tenant is actually included in that Human Rights Commission.
Yes, that would be great.
Very good. Thank you for that question on Facebook. If you have any more, please, please submit them. I'm going to talk about the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program. And Jeff, you touched on a lot of the, a lot of the benefits coming out. And Jeff, you touched on a lot of the benefits coming out of that program. It's commonly known as HELP. And Anne, I'm gonna ask you first. Please talk about the projects approved and how it's going to benefit the community. And also, just as important, please talk about how it might be leveraged for additional growth and/or quality of place improvement.
I did not get the last. I apologize.
Well, first, let's just talk about the projects and how it's going, you know, approved and how it's going to improve our community. And if that, the Help program and the grants with, through the ARPA money, how that can be leveraged to even further our growth. So not just for the projects in place, but how can we catapult future growth from that?
I probably do not have as much knowledge on the exact numbers as some of the people that are currently on City Council does. But I know that the priority as far, from what I understand, we're going to be working with the commissioners as well on this. And one thing I would like to see some of that money be used for is to address some type of shelter for animals. That is something our community is in desperate need of, both city and county. And I think that we need to work together with them. We need to take a lot of that money and put it back into our downtown businesses. They have suffered, the ones that are still, we've met multiple times with the businesses that are still open down there, to put some of the funds back into the downtown that they have suffered so severely over the years. They've suffered the pandemic, street closures, just one thing after another. And I would like to see some of that money be designated for downtown. And those business owners, many of them have put their blood, sweat, and tears, and some of them their life savings into their businesses and those buildings. So I would like to see some of the funds come to help bring those buildings back to...
Well, thank you. Lucinda, take me to repeat the question or...
No, you're talking about, we're talking about the projects that the Help funds will be doing. The presentation on Monday night, I must say, was fantastic. Gave me a clear picture. They're talking about putting 50 townhomes down on where Old Nicholson School used to be. Similar to those that they have, I can't remember the street in Muncie, but I remember when they first did those, absolutely beautiful. They're talking about doing that. And that's, in my district, they are talking about activating the gorge, bringing it up to where there can be kayaking and that type of things. Various things for people to do. People say there's nothing to do in Richmond. There really is, there's really quite a few things that you can do if you just, if you look, if we look around, take the time and look around. Those projects, a quality of place and a quality of life, that it will draw people in and it will increase revenue, the improvements that the Parks Department has made. And it will attract not only that, but businesses to come and to set up shop here in Richmond. Again, revenue goes up. And I'm proud of the city in which we live in. There's a lot of improvements that need to be made. And with this project, that's a start. You know, for us to be able to do that, to the animal, they're, actually, I think they've got a, they're getting a group together to research some things about...
Comprehensive study.
Yeah, the comprehensive study on that situation with the animals. So it's hitting the things that, since I have been on City Council, that have been discussed. So this money has come at a great time and it was approved. We approved the projects. So, and it's not only just the city, but things in the county as well. It's the city and county, and there's about eight of us, eight towns, so...
It's an exciting time.
It is. It really is.
Jeff, you touched on Help earlier.
Some of the projects, one of the projects, the City-County project, is the revitalization of Main Street. You know, to try to get something done with, you know, some of those buildings refurbished, replenished. We've talked briefly about the apartment complex at the Old Elder Beerman, which is a different project. But if you can get downtown revitalized, I've talked for years with, meetings I've been at, I'd love to see a restaurant downtown stays open past 2:00 in the afternoon. You know, I think if we get the project in with the apartments, there's going to be amenities that they need. I mean, there's a drugstore downtown right now, but Lucinda talked earlier about food deserts. Well, you're going to need some kind of a grocery store if you get allotted downtown living. You're gonna, you know, coffee shops, restaurants. So I think with the City-County project, that's going to go a long way there. Lucinda also touched on the gorge project. One of the things they've talked about is ziplining. You know, if you can turn that into a park atmosphere, tie it in with the Cardinal Greenway, it's going to increase tourism.
Oh, yes.
And tourism means dollars. So, you know, whatever we can do to draw more people to Richmond, you know, again referring back to Lucinda, there's things here to do. When I first moved to Richmond, and even before I moved to Richmond, we would come up and go to the plays at Richmond Civic Theater. We'd go to the shows out at the high school, the Live of the Arts series, I forget the name of it right now. But there's things to do if you look for them. But I think with these things, these projects, the projects in the Cambridge City and Milton and Centerville, it's all going to add to the quality of life in Wayne County. I mean, next year, in April, we're going to be in, you know, right dab in the middle of this solar eclipse. We've all heard the talk from tourism where there's going to be 100,000 people coming. So if we can get these projects started, they can see that Richmond, Wayne County is growing. You know, I mean, it's just advertisement you can't pay for.
I would agree with that.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm gonna go to the success we've had in our industrial parks and around this area. So we've had great success with our Midwest Industrial Park and the Gateway Industrial Park, for that matter. That's county, obviously, but the Midwest Industrial Park being in District 5. But however, we've seen a steady population decline. I mean, going back to 1970, but most recently going from 2000 to 2020, we've lost about 3,500 people in the city of Richmond. How do we go about leveraging the success we've had in the industrial parks to increase or stabilize, at least just stabilize, our population? So, and this affects all districts, not...
Yes, oh, no.
Even though the growth happened in District 5. But Lucinda, how do we leverage that to increase our population or stabilize it?
Well, a lot of people that work in Richmond, but they don't live in Richmond because of the housing situation. And I'm sure if we had more market rate, additional market rate housing, that would increase, but that has been an issue. So, again, and as long as we continue to have, we have new businesses coming in. So if we could get, again, increased housing, we could get people who are, you know, to move to Richmond. Because it is affordable. Richmond is affordable. And we've got all these new businesses coming in. So we need more housing so people can move here and work, not only just work here, but live here as well.
Thank you. Jeff?
You know, I, being retired, when I'm not playing politics or lines club, I play golf. And I went to out-of-town golf course last week and driving north on 27, about 8:30 in the morning, it was a steady stream of vehicles coming south into Richmond. People living out of town. It's not only Richmond, but I think east-central Indiana, you know, Winchester's lost population, Connersville's lost population, where I'm from, they're down about 7,000 people. We've lost the different factories. Luckily, here in Wayne County, we're bringing factories into efforts through the EDG, the Chamber, the city. You know, we're getting that investment back in both the Midwest Industrial Park and also out here on the west side of town. How we get them back into Richmond goes back to what Lucinda says, quality affordable housing. You know, I'm sure Anne can touch on that with her, with what she does, but I think those are the keys. But when I lived in Connersville, the Ford plant was the largest employer for five counties. Bill Schellenferd was the plant manager at the time, and he said he was the largest employer for Fay at Wayne, Union, Franklin, and I believe Rush. So, you know, when Ford left, 4,000 jobs left, several thousand people left. You know, Greensburg got the Honda plant, a lot of them migrated down there. You know, even with us being on an interstate, you know, it's, we're a mobile society now. I mean, you know, everybody's got a car, a couple cars. During my work here at Indiana University, we had a lot of staff that lives in Dayton or Oxford, and they chose to drive back and forth. So how do we get them to come to Richmond? You know, it's all in housing and affordability.
Anne?
Well, first, I'd like to say that I think one of the great things we have is a really strong EDC that's been working, and they've brought multiple businesses back here. And I would, if elected, I would like to continue to work with them. And as a realtor, I do know the importance of growing alongside of those businesses and with the population growth. And I would want to use my experience to, as a real estate broker, to work with housing developers and contractors to make housing more available to both middle class, well, to everyone across the board. And in doing so, we're also going to need, you know, to work closely with our first responding agencies and social services, healthcare, and education. The Help dollars, you mentioned the gorge, that's going to bring more people to Richmond. And I see Richmond, we can have a very bright future ahead of us. And we just have to start working alongside of those already in our community. It's very important to me, as a realtor, I see the impacts, and I know they do too, of having out-of-town investors. It can be very, very frustrating when you're trying to get ahold of them for things. And they have properties that are available and sitting empty. And we have people that are driving, like you said, they're not... We have a lot of people that live here and work out of town. And we have a lot of people that are out of town that are working here. So I think we just need to supply and demand to catch up. And I think we can definitely make that happen in the future.
Well, thank you. I do believe we have another question from one of our viewers. Okay, so if you are elected to council and the mayoral candidate is from a different political party, how will you help council work together with the mayor to improve the city of Richmond? Forget who I started with last time, maybe Lucinda, I think I did.
I think it was me, but...
You thought it started with you?
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Does anybody want to volunteer for this one?
Well, it's a team effort. It's a team effort regardless of which political party you are. If you're on City Council, we have an obligation to you, the constituent, the voters. So we are on City Council for a common purpose, for the improvement and the betterment of our community. And to help to guide that, those improvements. So we'll work as a team, as we are now.
Good. Anne?
I think Lucinda made a lot of really good points. Regardless of, if elected, regardless of your party affiliation, we are your voice to represent you, not just our party. And I think that you have to work together, regardless if it's your mayoral candidate or if it's the other side, it doesn't matter. You still have to work together with everyone on City Council as a team, regardless of who the mayor is. And I think there has to be unity there and respect one another. And Lucinda, and I think that, I think that's definitely possible, and people would be willing to do so.
We do it now.
Jeff?
Yeah, as Lucinda just said, we do it now. You know, right now, we have a Republican majority on council and a Democrat mayor. I mean, everybody gets along. The nine of us on City Council, you never hear politics mention that I'm one party or they're another party. The only time you see that come up, there are boards that the state requires a person of a certain political party to be on. You know, and it varies from time to time, but we had one a couple of years ago where it had to be a Democrat. The Republicans on council yield to us. You give us a name, you propose a name, we'll support you. That's the only time you see politics come up. I've been in and out of elected office for 40 years. Once we get past Election Day, you don't hear Democrat or Republican come up. It just doesn't happen. You know, everybody gets along. I mean, we all might have our disagreements on things, but at the end of the day, we're still working for Richmond.
Absolutely. I believe we have another question from our viewers. We've got active viewers tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Why isn't there parking enforcement downtown and will there be in the future? So Anne, I'll start with you. Should be, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think the parking, the lack thereof, parking downtown is a huge issue. And I think it's hard, we're down a tremendous amount of officers on RPD. And they have to prioritize their calls, obviously. And we have to work to retain officers that we have and bring new officers in and start enforcing that. But we also have to start working to get more parking for those downtown businesses, opening up streets. There has to be a solution. We have to work together. I feel like it's been at a halt, or it's open for a day or two a lot recently. And...
Yeah, I'd say especially so if businesses are going to come back downtown.
Exactly. But yeah, we have the parking garage, but yes, we definitely are going to have to work to find a solution. And then we are going to have to work with law enforcement, code enforcement, however you see it, to enforce, you know, the parking codes and the issues.
Lucinda?
In all honesty, I believe that is probably a police department question. However, we are down about 14 officers. And we have the parking garage, and we also have Elstro Plaza. And I have seen some, it appears... And I have seen some, it appears to be more parking slots down since they've got Ninth, Ninth Street, Eighth and Ninth Street done, more parking slots there. And it is possible that there will be, in the future, it's very well possible, not sure, it just depends on, on, on the department, on RPD. So that's something I think that they, I think that's their call. I don't think that's city council's call.
Okay. Jeff, your opinion on it?
There is parking enforcement downtown because I received a parking ticket. And I didn't pay it.
That's funny.
So in the past, we, there was parking enforcement downtown. I think it was suspended during the recent construction on Main Street. When I received my parking ticket, it was done by civilian police employee, a regular road officer from RPD wasn't out writing parking tickets downtown, it was done by, by civilian employees. That would probably be a decision between the mayor and Chief Britt when they're going to start that back up again. But I think it's my understanding it was suspended during the construction. When it comes back, I don't know, but they, they do do it because I'm a witness to it.
Well, we, we thank you for your dollars.
Oh, yeah.
The city does.
Yeah, gave back some.
Yeah. So I've got a question on DORA, the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. And recently, I believe it was.
Tabled.
Tabled.
Tabled, yep.
And it's going to come up again. But just want to hear your thoughts, what's your stance on it? If it comes back around and is passed, what's your stance on it and what impact do you think it'll have on the city of Richmond? Jeff, I'll start with you.
Yeah, the reason it was tabled, the Public Safety Committee wants to study it more. There is questions such as, how's it going to be enforced? You know, if they get outside the parameters, are, are we looking at possible misdemeanor violations for alcohol possessions or drinking, open container type laws? So I, I'll be interested to see what the Public Safety Commission comes back with. On the other hand, I think it's a good tool to draw people down into the historic Depot District, you know, for lack of a better word, a beer garden type atmosphere. You know, as long as, as there's some controls and there's some enforcement so people aren't overindulging or whatever, I, I think it'd be, it's, I think it's another good tourism tool, you know, especially for the festivals we have. You know, they have the Oktoberfest down in the fall. It could create some other festivals in, in the historic Depot District. So I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it just needs more study.
Thank you. Anne?
I am grateful that it has been tabled or it's not tabled to the Public Safety Committee. I believe that, well, I will start by saying I've been in towns where they have had, as he would call it, a beer garden, a DORA. And I think it's limited to seven per city, possibly, something like that. But I currently would have to say I am with the, like I mentioned earlier, the staffing shortages with RPD, that a huge concern of mine. How is this going to be controlled? Are we going to be requiring the businesses to hire their own law enfor, their own security law enforcement? How are they going to be enforcing the rules? There's just a lot to take into consideration. I think that now is not the time for it. I think, you know, everything's rapidly changing. But I, it's something that I would hope to visit in the fut, down the road in the future, once we become more stabilized and are more adequately staffed.
Thank you. Lucinda?
That's another thing in my district, that's the Depot District. It's my district.
Absolutely.
It's District Two. And I have, I've been to places that have DORA, for instance. I've been to, I've been on Bell Street, it was amazing. Been to New Orleans and Bourbon Street, just amazing. And it's, DORA is Newt, Indiana. And as I said, I, I had the privilege of, of, of going to several places that had DORA's. And it is, it does attract business for the businesses. It's a good opportunity for the small businesses in the, in the Depot District. However, the, the implementation and everything, there does need to be, you know, additional studies. And that's why it was tabled because we had all agreed that there needed to be. And so I'm anxious to hear what they find out, how it all is going to come into play. And we may have to make some revisions on it as well. So, but if it's done properly and the execution and the implementation and the monitoring is done correctly, it will be a great thing for the Depot District.
Yeah. Thank, thank you. Well, we're kind of winding up our time here. And I want to apologize to our viewers if we did not get your question up on the screen to get answered. And I also want to apologize to the candidates if you did not get it, make any closing remarks. But I, but, but we just kind of run up and ran out of time. But I do appreciate you putting your names on the ballot.
Thank you.
I appreciate your dedication to Richmond and I wish you all the best. We're going to go through some public service announcements right now or just information? So we've got information for voting. Absentee and in person is happening now. You have the locations listed right there. So, and the day of Election Day, Tuesday, November 7th, you can vote in person at First Bank Coleman Center, First English Lutheran, the Golay Center, Milton Town Hall, Mount Olive Baptist Church and First Baptist Church. And join us that evening for in focus live election coverage, Tuesday, November 7th. And that will be at Whitewater Hall at Indiana University East. And after election, you can come meet your, your candidates, all the elected officials, November 14th, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock at Forest Hills Country Club. And that is for chamber members only. So, yep. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your dedication to our, our wonderful town. There's plenty of things to do here and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
We appreciate it.
Be blessed.